Good morning, everyone. My name is Elliot Payne. I'm the president of Minneapolis City Council. And before we convene our meeting, we have presentations of honorary resolutions. We are pleased to welcome guests to the space to share in these presentations before taking up our agenda. First is a resolution recognizing Juneteenth, presented by council members Vitah, Jenkins, Wansley, and myself.
Good morning. Oh, boy. My name is Andrea Jenkins. I represent Ward Eight on the Minneapolis City Council, and I am so honored to be able to share this resolution today along with my colleagues and community members as we recognize and honor Juneteenth as a holiday in the city of Minneapolis. It is a long time overdue. We instituted this holiday, I think, maybe five years ago. But Juneteenth, for those who are not familiar, is the happened in 1865 on June 19 when the state of Texas finally acknowledged the Emancipation Proclamation and the enslaved peoples, African peoples of Texas, were finally freed. So, the resolution reads, "Whereas, on June 19, 1865, in the state of Texas, where it is believed to be the last of enslaved people of African descent, still held in human bondage, receive news of their freedom and the entitlement to natural-born human rights under the law, which had actually been bestowed upon them two and a half years earlier when President Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, which had become official January 1 in 1863. And whereas later that year, on December 6, 1865, the Thirteenth Amendment to the Constitution, which abolished slavery, was ratified by Congress, and..."
"Whereas, through our system of oppression such as sharecropping, Jim Crow, redlining, and mass incarceration, the plunder of black bodies and black wealth continued past slavery and persists to this day, disproportionately affecting the physical and mental health, safety, and education of black Americans. And whereas, the current state of disparities is in direct correlation with the institution of slavery that continues to undergird our local and national economy. And whereas..."
"Whereas, the city has committed to deepening its work to institute policies and practices that will repair the harm experienced by people of African descent over the last 400 years as a result of the legacy of slavery and racism. And whereas, the city of Minneapolis recognizes the extent of the harm done and is taking active steps to reverse and repair the harm by adopting and implementing our Strategic Racial Equity Action Plan, creating and increasing systemic change to public safety responses that includes unarmed and non-police safety response for certain emergencies and for crime prevention, passing and implementing a resolution declaring racism as a public health emergency with several policy changes, formalizing and implementing a truth and reconciliation process, building out affordable housing with historic investments, creating inclusive economic development policies, and working to improve authentic engagement and build trust between community and city officials."
"Whereas, June 19 has since come to be known as Juneteenth and is one of the oldest celebrations in America, growing out of the experiences of black Americans and their enslaved ancestors, and is a celebration of the ending of chattel slavery in America with the first official Juneteenth celebration taking place in Texas in 1866. And whereas, Juneteenth provides an opportunity for the city to celebrate black American heritage and honor the lives, sacrifices, and contributions that are woven into the American fabric. And whereas, on May 14, 2021, just prior to adoption by the United States Congress, the following month, the Minneapolis City Council by ordinance officially declared Juneteenth a city holiday to be honored with a paid day off for city employees and to be recognized by everyone in Minneapolis. And whereas, the city of Minneapolis, in partnership with Hennepin County and the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board, recognizes and celebrates the week of Juneteenth with activities to commemorate June 19, 1865, and lighting of the I-35W Bridge. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the mayor and the city council do hereby honor and recognize June 19, 2025, as Juneteenth, the National African-American Independence Holiday in commemoration of the resistance and liberation of African Americans in the city of Minneapolis and in the nation." Thank you. Thank you so much, colleagues and community members. We do have here with us the Original Juneteenth Coalition. Is that the name of the group, Al? Okay. And then we also, I just wanted to give a quick shout-out and acknowledge Michelle Gibson-Webb, who we've lost recently. Michelle passed away. It's been a little bit over a month now, and Michelle has held this community down for decades with organizing around Juneteenth events, a Juneteenth parade. It was a passion of hers, and she did a lot of work to make sure that we gather in celebration of Juneteenth. So, rest in peace, Michelle. We appreciate all the work you did and that your legacy continues for the Juneteenth holiday. And I don't know if anyone else wants to speak. Alicia, you want to say something? A.J., anybody?
Well, on behalf of the Original Juneteenth Committee, we thank you all for this resolution. We thank you for the recognition of not only us and this celebration, but also the realities in which many black Americans are dealing with and we find ourselves facing now again today. And so, while Juneteenth is a holiday, there's a lot of history and things and work to be done. So, stay tuned, community, because we are working.
Thank you, colleagues. Anything? All right. Thank you. So, we're going to get in between these two black lines and take a photo.
Thank you so much.
Mark, you were here. Right. Ooh. Al, you in trouble.
I did.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
See you later, Blakie. Good job.
So, this next recognition, and we have some members of this work group coming forward. But I think, I think this next resolution really builds on the previous resolution that we just shared. This is a work group, or partial work group, that spent this past year looking at historical African-American sites throughout the city of Minneapolis, and they identified almost 40 or 40 different sites throughout the city that represent African-American history and culture. Unfortunately, there's only enough resources to prioritize 25 of those sites, but three of those sites are going to be nominated for national historic registries. And so, I'm really grateful for the work that these folks have been doing over this past year to identify those sites. And as a, at a time in our nation when African-American history is literally being erased, it is so critical that we take these moments to identify, and not only identify, but to solidify and formalize these historical sites, historical actions that have taken place in the city of Minneapolis. So, I want to just express my gratitude to the members of the work group and share this resolution honoring their work. Honoring and recognizing the African-American Heritage Work Group. Whereas, each year, the mayor and city council recognizes Black History Month and commits to honoring and uplifting black history and the contributions of peoples of African descent, not only in the month of February, but throughout the entire year. And whereas, on April 13, 2024, the mayor and city council established the African-American Heritage Work Group to provide input on the Minneapolis African-American Historic and Cultural Context Study, which aims to document the history of Africans, African-Americans, black Americans, Native Black Americans, and peoples of African descent in what is now Minneapolis from the early 1800s to the present day.
"And whereas, on June 28, 2024, the mayor and the city council duly appointed 15 members of this committee, community, who are knowledgeable in African-American heritage in Minneapolis. And whereas, Daniel Bergen, James Curry, Kendra Elner, Tierra Fard, Michelle Gibson, Minister Dr. Aura Hoax, Denise Jamison, Brian Kelly, Michelle Lincoln, Greg McMoore, Julia Moturi, Beverly Probes, Davu Sebru, Teeny Wells, and Keegan Dzavi comprised, comprise, I said compromise, comprised the African-American Heritage Work Group and represent different generations of black Minneapolitans from across the city in beautiful and varied lived and professional experiences. And..."
"Whereas, members of the African-American Heritage Work Group have provided invaluable insight and recommendations to shape the Minneapolis African-American Historic and Cultural Context Study, to uplift the stories of African-Americans, black Americans, Native Black Americans, and people of African descent in Minneapolis, to recognize sites of historical and cultural significance to this community, and to imagine how we could and should preserve and celebrate this community's heritage moving forward. And whereas, the city of Minneapolis recognizes and appreciates each member of the African-American Heritage Work Group for making significant and lasting contributions to the city and the region. Now..."
"Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby commemorate the individuals who served on the first-ever African-American Heritage Work Group in the city of Minneapolis. We pledge to continue our efforts to recognize African-American people, places, events, which are essential to our city's heritage." Thank you all for participating in this work. I want to just give an opportunity for a few folks to say some things and reflect on the experience. But first, I think we should hear from staff, and I want to thank staff member Erin Kue, who led this work and will continue the work moving forward. Erin, you want to say a few words?
Thank you so much, Councilmember Jenkins, and the entire council, and the mayor for recognizing this really incredible group of community members who raised their hands and volunteered to serve on this new work group. It has been an honor and a privilege to get to serve as the staff liaison for this group in service of these wonderful people. We have done incredible work together that we are excited to share with you as we're currently wrapping up our grant project, finishing up that contact study, and we'll share it with you all later this summer so that you can also share it out with your constituents so they're aware that this project took place. We are so grateful to our members for really pushing us to think above and beyond what could be here and really change the way we are approaching historic preservation here in the city of Minneapolis. We also want to thank the Clerk's Office for your administrative support in getting this Tier Four body up and running and supporting us through the process. We couldn't have done it without you. Thank you also, Councilmember Jenkins, for being with us last night where you could be in community with more of our work group members, and we do have a few representatives who are here today.
Greg McMoore, yeah, from South Minneapolis. Thank you. Ward Eight, Andrea, yes. Lifelong, all right. But yeah, I just want to say thank you to the city, the city council, for allowing us, or giving us the opportunity to do this kind of work. There's several historic, history projects going on right now in South Minneapolis, and this kind of opportunity supports that. So, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Hotap, Minister Dr. Aura Hoax, Northside, excuse me. Get carried away. But thank you, Mayor Fry, and to the city council members, and to my dearest friends, Councilmember Vitah and Councilmember Jenkins for your long service and commitment to us. And as we know, that it was people of African descent who built America over their blood, sweat, and dead bodies. So, for the city of Minneapolis to have this type of work move forward, and for Ms. Kue to work with us over this past year, it has been a blessing to see the fruition of our work and all of those who served so tirelessly. And for the city of Minneapolis to, in a way kindly, finally recognize the work that African-Americans have contributed to this city. So, thank you.
Thanks as well to the city of Minneapolis and Erin K and her team. I felt that since we are under active attack, black history, that is, I'd like to make a motion to have this group go on in perpetuity, but I don't know the proper channels. But, so, it's a wish. I'd like to seize the moment, or the momentum, and maybe put that out there for maybe the Clerk's Office. But I just thought I'd put, I'd be remiss not to at least acknowledge that. But thank you, also Representative Jenkins.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do want to just acknowledge that this should be ongoing work, and there are other groups that are continuing to perpetuate this work, so we can get involved with that. And there, I was, you mentioned the clerk, and this was a really tight process. I think it's called a Tier Four work group, and it has a very limited scope. And I want to commend the work group for understanding their mission and meeting their stated goals within that one-year time period. And so, while that, this work is sunsetting at this moment, there is work that is continuing to uncover and lift up and memorialize African-American history in the city of Minneapolis. So, thank you all, and let's take a quick group photo here.
Next, we will welcome up Councilmember Osmond to recognize Djibouti Independence Day.
Good morning. My name is Jamal Osmond. I am a council member for Ward Six. I'm honored today to have Djiboutian-American community Minneapolis right here, and I would like to recognize and celebrate their contribution in the city of Minneapolis. So, here you go with the resolution. Celebrating Djiboutian Independence Day in the city of Minneapolis. Whereas, Djibouti became a French colony in the late 19th century, known as French Somaliland, enduring over a century of colonial rule. And whereas, the struggle for independence gained momentum after World War II, culminating in national movement for self-determination and freedom. And whereas, on June 27, 1977, Djibouti officially gained independence day from French colonial rule, making a significant milestone in the nation's history. And whereas, Djibouti strategically located at the crossroad of Africa and the Middle East, serves as a vital hub for trade, transportation, with rich cultural heritage influenced by diverse ethnic group and language. And whereas, the United States and Djibouti share a strong bilateral relation characterized by cooperation in areas such as economic development, trade, and cultural exchange, fostering mutual understanding and collaboration between the two nations. And whereas, Djiboutian-American community in Minneapolis has made a remarkable contribution to the city, cultural, social, and economic landscape, enriching it with their tradition as an achievement and culinary delight. And whereas, Djiboutian diaspora in Minneapolis fosters a sense of belonging and pride, promoting cultural understanding and solidarity with the broader community. And whereas, Djibouti Independence Day not only commemorates the nation's freedom, but also celebrates the contribution of Djiboutian immigrants and their descendants to our city. And whereas, June 27, 2024, will mark the 48th anniversary of Djibouti Independence Day. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council do hereby celebrate Thursday, June 27, 2024, as a Djiboutian Independence Day, and that we honor and celebrate the contribution of Djiboutian-American community to our city by extending our warmest congratulation and best wishes to all members of Djiboutian-American community on this significant occasion. I just want to really thank their contribution and congratulate you on your 48th Independence Day of Djiboutian nations. As you know, Djibouti is a diverse nation, and it's an honor to have them in the city of Minneapolis. They have contributed a lot to our city. I'll use one example. One of my good friend, Kahin, the founder of Afraid Daily, is a Djiboutian-American, and I really want to congratulate you and thank you for joining us today and give you a moment to say a few words.
Thank you, council members, for recognizing and honoring our Djiboutian community in Minneapolis. This resolution is very important to us as we celebrate Djibouti Independence Day and acknowledge the value contribution of Djiboutian-American community. It helps promote inclusivity and cultural understanding, makes our city a strong and more united place. Your support in passing this resolution shows that we value diversity and rich heritage that each community brings to our city. It's truly meaningful, a lot to us. Thank you so much.
Does anybody else want to add? Oh, that's fine. All right. We're going to take a picture. We're going to get between the black lines.
Thank you for those presentations. And before I call our regular meeting to order, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge what happened over the weekend. As we meet this morning, the atmosphere across our state and here in our local community is heavy with our shared grief in the aftermath of the assassination of Speaker Emerita Melissa Hortman and her husband Mark, and the attempted assassination of Senator John Hoffman and his wife, Yvette. We stand in solidarity with them and their families and loved ones. Beyond the horror of this tragedy, we are left frustrated, confused, and angry by this senseless act of political violence. We must be united and absolutely clear on this point. Political violence of any type is an attack on the values that we share and that define who we are as the United States as a democracy. We must unequivocally and adamantly condemn such acts. Protecting our democracy means standing up to political violence. It is on each of us, and all of us together, to come together in this moment. We must push back against the polarization and the divisiveness and the hateful rhetoric. We must stop the othering that allows us to see our family, friends, and neighbors as enemies. In our democracy, we debate issues openly. We disagree and argue passionately and purposefully, and we challenge each other to consider different perspectives, but we do not resolve our differences through violence. That is absolutely unacceptable. As we grieve for Melissa and Mark, and as we pray for John and Yvette, we must also commit ourselves here in Minneapolis to uphold the standards that are demanded in a free and open society. As we've noted from time to time, the standards of decorum encourage us to debate the issues before us, even before us, even passionately, but to never let those disagreements become personalized. We must honor each other's lived experiences and different perspectives that we bring to this work without fear. Together, we must stand for our shared values and join with others who oppose and condemn political violence in all forms. With that, I'd like to hold space for my colleagues to share their own thoughts and comments, if any. Seeing no one, I'll ask at this time that we hold a moment of silence and reflection of the memory of Melissa and Mark Hortman. Thank you, colleagues. At this time, I'm going to call this regular meeting of the city council for June 18 to order. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Present.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Present.
Councilmember Choudry.
Present.
Councilmember Cashman.
Present.
Councilmember Osman is absent. Councilmember Rainville.
Present.
Councilmember Chavez.
Present.
Councilmember Vitam.
Present.
Councilmember Allison.
Here.
Councilmember Kosky is absent. Councilmember Wonsley.
Present.
Vice President Chugtai.
Present.
President Payne.
Present.
There are 11 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Before we begin the meeting, I want to offer a friendly reminder to all members and staff that this meeting is broadcast live to enable greater public participation. The broadcast includes real-time captioning as a further method to increase the accessibility of our proceedings to the community. Therefore, all speakers need to be mindful of the rate of their speech so that our captioners can fully capture and transcribe all comments for the broadcast. We ask all speakers to moderate the speed and clarity of their comments. With that, the agenda for today's meeting is before us. Are there any amendments? I'm not seeing.
Council President, I'm sorry. Councilmember Osman is absent right at this moment, but as you know, we just did a resolution celebrating Djibouti Independence Day, which needs to be added formally to the agenda so we can adopt it later on if another member could make that motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Cashman has moved to amend the agenda to include under the Order of Resolutions, the consideration of a resolution celebrating Djibouti Independence Day. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That carries. I also have a motion to amend the agenda. This is to add under the Order of Unfinished Business, consideration of an amendment to a staff direction adopted by the city council last November related to municipal revenue. The full text is before you, but the motion is to update the direction to include examination of other revenue sources and collaboration with the Board of Estimate and Taxation. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? That carries. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Choudry.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitam.
Aye.
Councilmember Allison.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and the agenda is adopted. The next item is acceptance of minutes from our regular meeting of June 5. I would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Choudry.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitam.
Aye.
Councilmember Allison.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and the minutes have been accepted. Finally, we have the referral of petitions, communications, and reports to committees. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Choudry.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitam.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and those matters have been referred. The next order of business is the presentation of reports from our standing committees. Those are taken in alphabetical order, beginning with the report of our Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee, which will be presented by its chair, Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you. President Payne, the Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee is bringing forward 24 items. The first is a gift acceptance from the National Indian Health Board of Airfare, Lodging, and Perdiem. Two is a gift acceptance from the Government Alliance on Race and Equity for Travel and Lodging. Three is a gift acceptance from Police Executive Research Forum for Travel and Lodging. Four is a gift acceptance from Skidia for Two Individuals and the Police Department for Travel, Lodging, and Meals. Five is a gift acceptance from Global Philanthropy Partnership for Travel, Lodging, and Mail Expenses. Six is a collective bargaining agreement with Minneapolis Supervisors Association, 2025 through 2027. Seven is a collective bargaining agreement, AFME Attorneys Unit, 2025 through 2027. Eight is an initial collective bargaining agreement, Minnesota Public Employees Association, NPD Inspectors and Commanders, for the period January 1, 2024, through December 31, 2026. Nine is an initial collective bargaining agreement, Minneapolis Association of Police Deputy Chiefs, NPD Assistant and Deputy Chiefs, for the period January 1, 2024, through December 31, 2026. Ten is a contract amendment with Emerge Community Development for 2025 Youth Group Violence Intervention Services. Seven, sorry, 11 is a contract amendment with Tyzak Concrete LLC for Ramp Improvement Projects. 12 is a contract amendment with CDM Smith, Inc., for Engineering, Design, and Construction Oversight Services for the Fridley Campus Electrical Rehabilitation Project. 13 is a contract amendment to the City Hall Restack Phase 3C Project. 14 is a contract amendment with Shrenler Elevator Corporation for Public Service Building Elevator Service Contracts. 15 is a contract amendment with Bolton Mink, Bolton &amp; Mink, Inc., for Engineering and Design Services for the Fourth Street North and South Street Reconstruction Project. 16 is a contract amendment with Skadada, Inc., for Minneapolis Convention Center Third Avenue Ramp. 17 is an amendment to the Purchase Agreement with 1111 Partners LLC for the acquisition of a new Police First Precinct building. 18 is a bid for demolition of 1001 West Broadway. 19 is a bid for Nicolette Avenue Bridge reconstruction over the Midtown Greenway project. 20 is a bid for Fremont Ave South Sanitary Pipe Replacement Project. 21 is a bid for 2025 Concrete Pavement Rehab. 22 is Minneapolis Advisory Committee on People with Disability Appointments. 23 is a legal settlement. Steven Metal, the City of Minneapolis Court File Number 27 CV 2418638. 24 is a legal settlement, Workers' Compensation Claim of Johnny Mercer. With that, I will move approval of all items.
Councilmember Wonsley has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? Let me get my speaker management up to date here. Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to note that there are a few gift acceptances here on this agenda that the date has already passed, which is against our financial policies to accept a gift for something, something that we cannot return if we do not accept that gift. And I believe on the AEO Committee, we've had this discussion in the past about making sure that those requests and RCAs are submitted on time. And I'm just looking into this a little bit more, there doesn't seem to be any public funding match for these particular gift acceptances, but some that are on the agenda for next week do have a contribution, a taxpayer contribution to the gift acceptance as well. So I just want to make sure that we're able to do our diligent oversight over this type of agenda item in future AEO Committees. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll also recognize that we've been joined by Councilmember Osman. Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, President Payne. I just wanted to give a quick response to Councilmember Cashman. Of course, you sit on the committee as well. This is something that can be flagged in committee where we have staff present. I brought this forward or approved of it because Health in Agenda Setting gave explicit reason as to why it should be, and there was a mishap on their behalf. If that's something that you would like to hear yourself, again, more than happy to have staff present at these committees for them to speak to those gift acceptances, because that's also my high priority is to be in compliance with our financial policies. But just wanted to let you know that's an option going forward.
Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Council President Payne. I'd just like to move item number 24 out for a separate vote.
Councilmember Chavez has moved item number 24 for a separate vote. Councilmember Wonsley. Got it. I'm going to add myself to queue just to thank one of my constituents, Amanda Temple, for joining the Minneapolis Advisory Committee on People with Disabilities. She's been a really strong advocate for people with disabilities, but also very engaged in all of our boards and commissions from a systems level, and just really grateful for her commitment to the city. Seeing no further discussions, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on all items except item number 24.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Choudry.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitam.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and those items are adopted. Next, we will take up item number 24, and seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Choudry.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
No.
Councilmember Vitam.
Aye.
Councilmember Allison.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Nay.
Vice President Chugtai.
Nay.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are nine ayes and three nays.
That carries, and that item is adopted, and that completes the Administration and Enterprise Oversight Report. Next, we will have the report from our Budget Committee, which will be given by that committee's chair, Vice President Chugtai.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget Committee is bringing forward two items today. Item number one is a passage of resolution amending the 2025 General Appropriation Resolution, making adjustments related to the 2025 Consolidated Action Plan. And item number two is 2026 Budget Recommendations for the Legislative Department Supplemental Budget and directing the council president and vice president to present those recommendations to the mayor. I'll move approval of both of these items.
Vice President Chugtai has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just need to restate my objections, because I certainly don't object to this entire budget, but I cannot vote to support this Legislative Department budget recommendation because I have concerns with the request in the Audit Department. This body gave the Audit Department four additional positions just last cycle. At a time when we've asked departments to cut their budgets, I cannot support this request for three more positions to the amount of nearly $600,000. Thank you.
Seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on the.
Hold on. I just have one.
Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you. I just. Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one question for the Budget Chair, following up on Councilmember Palmasano's remarks that this is a $600 budget ask. I had understood this whole budget to be cost-neutral, so there's not an additional ask here. Is that correct, Budget Chair Chugtai?
The, I think, Councilmember, if you're asking about the, some of the new FTEs in the Audit Department, those are ones that exist in the enterprise right now, and so by, in that way, they're budget-neutral, but there are some additional asks as well. I mean, of course, at the end of the day, these are, these are recommendations that we are bringing forward to the mayor, who ultimately recommends a budget in August, and we ultimately approve it in December. So I think it's healthy for our, our department to ask for the things that, that we need in order to perform core services.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on the budget report.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Yes on item one and no on item two.
Councilmember Choudry.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye on one, nay on two.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitam.
Aye on one, no on two.
Councilmember Allison.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 items, 12 ayes on the first item, and there are three nays on the second item.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we'll have the report from our Business, Housing, and Zoning Committee, given by that committee's chair, Councilmember Osman.
Thank you, President Payne. The Business, Housing, and Zoning Committee is bringing 16 items today. Item one is a passage of resolution approving Minneapolis Homes, Properties, Sales, and Financial Agreements. Item two is approving an appointment to the City Planning Commission. Item three is approving a permanent expansion license and sidewalk cafe for Black Sheep Pizza. Item four is approving nine liquor licenses. Item five is approving 54 liquor license renewals. Item six is approving four gambling licenses. Item seven is authorizing a grant submission to the 2025 Met Council Livable Community Accounts. Item eight is accepting and authorizing construction grants from the state for the Upper Harbor Terminal, Upper Harbor Outdoor Music Venue. Item nine is authorizing a contract for the project at 2714 Bryan Avenue. Item 10 is adopting the Alternative Urban Area Wide Review and Mitigation Plan for Upper Harbor Terminal. Item 11 is authorizing a Great Street Loan to the Latino Center for Community Engagement. Item 12 is approving 21 appointments to the Minneapolis Advisory Committee on Housing. Item 13 is approving an appointment to the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority Board Commissioners. Item 14 is approving two amendments to the 2025 License Fee Schedule related to the Window Cleaning and Sauna Establishment. Item 15 is approving legislative directive related to the Minneapolis Skyway System. Item 16 is approving a staff direction related to the pet restriction in rental properties. With that, I'll move all items for approval. Thank you.
Councilmember Osman has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number 14, the License Fee Schedule, I would motion to postpone one cycle 14.1, which is the license fee for sauna establishments, as we also postponed the sauna registration ordinance by one cycle as well, and I'd like them to move together.
Councilmember Cashman has moved to postpone 14.1. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on that? Councilmember Choudry, you're in for the previous? Okay. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the postponement of 14.1.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Choudry.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitam.
Aye.
Councilmember Allison.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that item will be postponed to our next regular meeting. We have discussion on the remainder of the items. Councilmember Choudry.
I, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to speak to the Planning Commission appointment and just say congratulations and thank you to David Shepherd for stepping up to fill the planning, to fill the Planning Commission position. And I just also wanted to thank the other commissioners for serving on that board. I serve as the council appointment, and this board does really important work, land use reviews, site plan reviews, conditional use permits, changes of expansions, expansions of non-conforming uses, variances, and they volunteer their time or they come through after they do their jobs as citizens. And they volunteer their time, or they come through after -- they do their jobs as citizens that we've appointed to do this work, and it's been really valuable, I would say, to the Business Housing and Zoning Committee. And so I just wanted to thank this individual, but thank the whole of people that have been supporting the city council on the planning commission.
Vice President Chugtai.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to pull together items 4.2, 4.3, and 5.24 for a separate motion and discussion.
Vice President Chugtai has polled items 4.2, 4.3, and 5.24 for a separate vote and discussion. Any discussion on the remainder of the agenda? Councilmember Vitah.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to speak to item eight, the Upper Harbor Terminal Construction. Just wanted to say, this is a big deal for Ward 4. This project has been going on for a long time, so it's really good to see movement on this. I'm excited about the way in which we're going to involve community and labor in this project moving forward. So thank you to First Avenue and the folks that are here today in support of this. And again, this is super exciting for Ward 4, and I am so honored to be a council member. And thank you, Councilmember Ellison, for your support on this and the work we'll continue to do to make sure that the community has this great asset.
Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you. I have a couple -- a couple items here. First, I want to -- for item 14.2, I want to thank local SEIU for their help in this window wash ordinance, as well as my staff. It's taken a long time to get to this. It's a new ordinance, so the amendment -- I shouldn't say ordinance, the amendment for the license fee. With their help, with SEIU's help, we did a really good job on that, so I want to publicly acknowledge that. Then also on item 15, with the permission of Councilmember Cashman, I'd like to pull this for one cycle. I did offer some amendments for that, and somehow, in the confusion, the clerks did not include that. So unless I'm wrong. Councilmember Cashman, they believe it was in there.
Yeah, the version I see on LIMs is just the original legislative directive, not the amended one that has Rainville as a co-author and additional questions. I'd be happy to move the amended version, if we do have it in front of us, and explain what's on it to our colleagues here, so that we can get this in. Thank you.
Let's pull 15 out for a separate vote. We'll take up the remainder of the items while the clerks check their documents. Seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on all items except 14.1, 4.2, 4.3, 5.24, and item 15.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
Those items carry. Next, I will recognize Vice President Chugtai to make a motion on 4.2, 4.3, and 5.24.
Thank you, Mr. President. These three items are all related to the liquor licenses for an establishment in the Lynn Lake Corridor named Los Andes. So on January 16th, the Star Tribune reported -- I see that every -- clerks, we can hear you, your mics are on. Yeah. On January 16th, the Star Tribune reported that the manager, co-owner of Los Andes, Christian Keto, had been charged with third-degree criminal sexual conduct related to a 16-year-old employee after the employee's shifts and attempts to intimidate the victim out of reporting. Unfortunately, I learned this morning that Mr. Keto has been charged with fourth-degree criminal sexual conduct in just the last few days related to a very recent conduct. In light of that, I've had the opportunity to speak with staff this morning, and they need some time to review the matter before we take action on these licenses. And given that, I will move to send items 4.2, 4.3, and 5.24 back to the Business Housing and Zoning Committee to allow staff the time they need for their review. And with that, I'll ask for a second.
Second.
That has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the referral of 4.2, 4.3, and 5.24 back to the Biz Committee? Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just asking whoever might be the best one to answer here, just making sure that that information came after the information we received from our attorneys yesterday on this matter.
That's correct. They've been made aware as well.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on the referral of items 4.2, 4.3, and 5.24 back to committee.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
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 Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to speak to the legislative directive for colleagues, too. And now you have a new version in front of you, which has some additional questions on the legislative directive. But I authored this because our Skyways are very important to the downtown residential and business community. They're such an important resource. We're one of the only cities in the world which has this incredible network of above-ground transportation space and activation space. And there has -- there's actually an ordinance in place that does require Skyway hours to be open until well into the evening and also in the weekends. But since COVID, they've been closing around 6:00 on the weekdays, and most of them are not open on the weekends. And so this ordinance is to under -- sorry, this legislative directive is to understand how we can work together with the owners of the Skyways and the users of the Skyways to get back to the pre-pandemic hours and access of the Skyway network, and what some opportunities for collaboration and enforcement of the ordinance that we have in place would look like. And so Councilmember Rainville has added a few questions here, which asks about the hours of the city-owned Skyways and the city enforcing its own rules in our Skyway network, and then how much the building owners are paying into the Downtown Improvement District, which is an important collaborator in funding a lot of the activation and security that does happen in the Skyway network. So I'm happy to answer any questions about this, and we'll move approval of this legislative directive.
Councilmember Cashman has moved approval. It's got a co-author, so it doesn't need a second. Councilmember Rainville.
A big thank you to the clerks for clearing this up. Thank you so much for that. I had a little bit of a panic attack here. And thank you, Councilmember Cashman, for introducing this. It's so important to get the Skyways activated again. This morning, I parked in our garage and walked over to the Downtown Council Office on Ninth and Niclet, and was the streets ever busy? There was cars everywhere, there were people walking. Downtown is coming back to life, and this is a big part of that activation. So I look forward to this information and making a wise decision on how to move forward. Thank you.
Seeing no one left in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on item number 15.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that item is adopted, and that completes the Biz Committee Report. The next report is from our Climate and Infrastructure Committee, which will be presented by that committee's chair, Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Climate and Infrastructure Committee has seven items today. Item one is a public sewer easement transfer from the city to the Met Council. Item two is accepting and executing lead service line replacement project orders. Item three is a variance request for the Lake Harriet Parkway from Roseway Road to Second Street West related to roadway. Item four is accepting a local climate action grant from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency for the As You Go Minneapolis program. That grant is in -- to the tune of $50,000, so that's great news. Item five is a cooperative agreement with Hennepin County for the construction of Franklin Ave from Lyndale to Chicago. Item six is establishing a priority bridge replacement list. And item seven is approving the proposed comments on the supplemental final environmental impact statement for the Blue Line Light Rail Extension and authorizing submission of those comments to the Met Council. I will move approval of all seven items.
Councilmember Cashman has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick note on item number three, the Lake Harriet Parkway paving project. I'm not celebrating yet, but as all of my colleagues with parkways in their wards know, Parkway repaving is a very long process. It takes a number of years. It goes a lot slower than our regular road maintenance budget. And this particular action is just for the variance for MSA operations. So I'll hold any other -- any celebration until an actual contract comes through, but we've had some grants from the DNR to help with this roadway and over the years. And I'm so thrilled to see and to be getting a briefing in the near future about the two-year repaving of this space, because there are so many users to this and to all of our parkways across the city. And the first step, as is typical in our projects, is about ADA accessibility, so ramps and curbs and that, and that in and of itself is going to be a big improvement. Thank you.
Seeing no one else left in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on the CNI Committee Report.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
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 Aye.
Councilmember Rainville. Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chug Thai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and the item is adopted. Next, we will take up item 2.1, which is a resolution waiving attorney-client privilege on a legal memo related to staff directives. Does anybody want to speak to this item? Attorney Anderson.
Thank you, Council President, council members. Not sure what your intentions are with respect to this, but I just want to be on the record with a couple of things. Number one, to be clear, this waiver is, that you're considering would be only with respect to the contents of the memo at issue itself and nothing else. Number two, even though this would be a narrow waiver, I need to say again that I advise against waiving attorney-client privilege. Three, I also want to emphasize that before you vote to waive privilege, you should be sure that you know what you're waiving, that you have thoroughly read the memo and that you don't have remaining questions pertinent to your decision whether to vote to waive. Making sure that your decision is a knowing decision.
Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you. I am not going to vote for this. I do not have a law degree and thus I'm going to follow the advice of our city attorney. And I believe that is the proper thing that we should all do. Thank you.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, President Payne. I'll share some more context on this in the following motion, but the intent behind bringing this, I thought, was stated pretty clear during the Cal meeting on Tuesday. The goal right now is to figure out how do we integrate the now dismissed provisions of the federal consent decree into our local settlement agreement with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights. For six months now, we've had multiple closed sessions with our city attorneys where we've asked for that pathway and this memo gives us a no. It doesn't give us a how. And we've all been asking for a how. Also, there's been opportunities for the city attorney or extended to come and explain either in closed session or even publicly before this body to talk about how did they land at a no instead of providing a how. So six months have transpired for the city attorney to give a basis for why they don't believe we should proceed. Or instead of just saying, no, 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 we are looking to pursue the how. And that's the next item that you'll be considering. But I do think it's important for both this body and also for the public to understand how are we landing at a place of a no. So I absolutely agree. Like, I want to hear the city attorneys to give their rationale because it's unclear based off of what is shared in that memo. And we can't talk about it publicly or more thoroughly without having that transparency around it. This gives us that transparency. City councils have taken action to do waivers before. We went through the appropriate legislative process to get to this point where you can consider something to allow us to give and provide that transparency. So I at least just wanted to name, that is why. Six months of asking how and then giving a memo that said no.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was my understanding from the end of the last meeting that we were going to have a closed session conversation on this. So shouldn't we be waiting until the end of that conversation as listed on the agenda to make a final disposition on these two items?
Madam City Attorney.
Council President, council members, you know, yes, we have a closed session briefing on a multitude of things related to the MDHR settlement agreement coming at the end of this, this meeting. As I said, I mean, I don't recommend that you waive privilege, period. Again, if you, if folks feel like they don't have enough information to make a knowing waiver, I would certainly suggest that, that they ask the questions that they need to in closed session.
As a point of clarification, Madam City Attorney, would the subject of that memo be within the scope of what we are giving notice for the closed session?
Council President, yes.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, I will not go back through my comments from the last meeting. They were, they were emotional. This, this matters a lot to me. This has been an evolving conversation as to how we merge all of our intent, all of our intent here. And that is what listeners in the audience said to me after the meeting, that all of our intent here is the same, to make sure that we are tracking publicly these intended reforms from both the proposed consent decree and our approved settlement agreement. But I'll just point this out, our city attorney's office strongly suggested we not do this. Secondly, this memo is already publicly available. Also, why would we, why would our city attorney ever put anything in writing ever again if you choose to take this action today? If, if this memo was leaked and that's why it's on the public domain and in social media, then that's one person's action. But if we as a body seek to do this above and beyond our city attorney's strong interest in saying this is a bad idea, that says something else.
Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask Councilmember Palmasano where this is publicly available.
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Cashman, I've seen it on Twitter, on X, whatever you call it. It has been, clips of this have been available on social media over the past week.
I personally wouldn't trust just random things that I see on Twitter. And I think if we, if this is publicly available, it should be public by way of the city's channels, which are trusted.
Councilmember Cashman, what I am saying is there are exact quotes and excerpts from this memo out in social media. And for that reason, this memo was leaked. Somebody else didn't come up with the exact same language from our city attorney.
Okay. Well, I don't think that, that there being clips or snippets on Twitter means that it's publicly available. But I also really want to understand the risk of this becoming public information. I, you know, I've looked back to the 2021 case in Limbs of when the city council at that time waived privilege. I was not here at the time and I'm wondering if anyone can fill me in on what exactly was the consequence of that, negative consequence of that, that we'd like to avoid this time.
I don't know that I can speak to that. Councilmember Palmasano, you were here. Mr. Clerk, you were here. I don't know if either of you wanted to speak to that.
I'm happy to speak to it, Mr. Chair. I did go back after our last meeting and go back and, and watch the entire thing. It's a little bit of a painful thing to watch because you're going back to when we all were operating remotely. And this was a follow-on, this particular attorney-client privilege back in 2021. That's what you're asking about, right, council member? It was about less lethal force, but the council in 2021 had already taken a resolution of support to make policy against ever using less lethal force on individuals. It was a resolution, it passed with one no vote and one abstention. I was the no vote. I used several examples as to why there are times in policing that you save people's lives by using less lethal force instead of, for crowd control instead of lethal force. And at the time, I spoke about how less lethal force was an evolving policy in our city, that after the uprising in 2020, our use of force policy had changed, I think I said, six times. And I had been, I was able to step through all of those times. So this particular waiving of client privilege was because the resolution also contained a provision for the city attorney to make a determination if council had the authority to write this into an ordinance. The city attorney submitted a private response and that was what was asked to be waived. I approved that. It was, it was pretty much done without discussion because from my recollection, it was done in a way that it would be made public. It was always the city attorney's intent that this was something that would sort of end the conversation because it was not seen as a right that the city council had to make ordinances that way. Councilmember Ellison was also here and he could opine on that if he wants.
Councilmember Ellison, you are in queue.
Yeah, just.
Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you. I just, was there any negative consequence of waiving privilege? Because I.
Councilmember Cashman, that memo was written in the way that we could do so. It was written with the intent from the city attorney's office that it would be made public. That was its intent from the beginning. And also, I must, I must admit, Councilmember Jenkins was Council Vice President Jenkins at the time and she might have some things to share on it as well. But it is a very different, this is a very different action than having a body waive privilege on something that the city attorney wrote that was meant to sort of be for the public and for public understanding accordingly versus something that was advice given to us by our attorney as stewards and as elected members of this body. Those are two very different things.
So I will always err on the side of transparency unless there is a very good reason, a very significant harm or consequence that would be at play. And I have not heard that reason from our city attorney. And I'll just, I'd be happy to take this up after the closed session if we could have that conversation. But I just want to say that that's, I will need a good reason to not waive privilege in this case. And we'll be waiting for the conversation in the closed session to hear that reason. So if it's possible to move this until after the closed session, I would make that motion.
I would second it. I will second it.
Madam City Attorney.
Council President, council members, I guess I just wanted to follow on with Councilmember Cashman's point. Because it's privileged, I'm limited to give you a fulsome explanation of any risks in a public forum. So I appreciate the opportunity to have that discussion in closed session.
Councilmember, well, we have a proper motion before us with the request to, well, do we need to, Mr. Clerk, do we need to dispose of what's here or does this motion to move it to the end, is that a proper motion?
Yeah, the motion that's been made in second to postpone till after closed session would have a higher priority ranking than the base motion to approve the original report or resolution.
Okay. On that motion, I will recognize Councilmember Ellison.
I see Councilmember Wonsley is in queue. I don't, okay. I was going to speak kind of to the base motion, so I don't know if, I'm happy to wait, is what I'm saying.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Yeah, thank you. I do want to note also just some differences. Councilmember Cashman, thank you for raising the piece of the risk. I think you also add something similar at Cal. And actually, it's kind of interesting that the city attorney actually named some of what they thought were speculative or speculative risks. They talked about certain parties that might be involved. So I'm hearing something even slightly different now from the city attorney of saying now we need to talk about potential risks in closed session where if we roll the tapes to Cal, there were some things that they named and even then it didn't seem it rose to the occasion of something serious. Also want to just flag in the actual resolution that council passed in 2021, the memo that was originally produced that I'm hearing Councilmember Palmasano reference, that there was always an intent to make it public, that's actually not true. And they actually wrote that in the resolution. They named that they requested a memo and the memo was privileged and was sent to council. They wanted to make it public so that the public could understand why would the city attorney give the advice that they were providing in regards to the less lethal ordinance that they were considering. It's literally written in the motion, they asked, please produce a public version of this memo that can be shared. So that was never created with the original intent, similar to what we're dealing with right now. And they even make note of that in the resolution itself. So I keep wanting to highlight that this is actually a straightforward process. And I'm more than happy, again, to talk in the closed session, but that is the issue here. We've been talking for six months in the closed session. And something that you all aren't familiar with, which some of us met with the city attorneys after our last closed session and got completely different information from what we have been hearing for the past six months. I think that is the baseline of why there is a need for some transparency of why is there feeling like a change in goalposts between our own legal council as, as pertaining to how we activate terms that's already in a settlement agreement that allows us a pathway to codify those federal consent decree terms. I don't understand why it's taken six months of having multiple. And I'm someone who brought the legislative directive that asked, per the recommendation of our city attorney and clerks, of how do we do this? How best to consult with our CAO on how to activate this? And you all named we should do it in closed session. I brought that legislative directive with amendment reflecting that recommendation about two and a half months ago. And in that process, we have not gotten any further to being able to know what is the formal process for making sure that we have a police department that is in compliance with human and constitutional law, human rights and constitutional law. We've had six months to talk about this in closed session. Another closed session, at this point, I don't understand what will get us there. This is why we brought the subsequent motion, to literally ask our city attorneys how. Because they've had the opportunity to do so for six months to tell us how. Both parties, the mayor and the council, how do we work together to codify? And I want to name, that is actually the intent. Councilmember Palmasano mentioned we all have the shared intent to track the implementation of the consent decree terms. It's, it goes more than tracking. It goes, how do we actually put a legally binding agreement in place so that there is formal tracking? So that there is the ability for residents to be able to also have a mechanism to hold the city accountable for delivering on police reform, which for many years, we've had this mayor, previous mayors, maybe even future mayors that might come out and say, yes, we're going to do this, we're doing it anyways. And actually, that proves to be false. So this gives us a pathway to codify that, that will outlast our time here, the current mayor and other future administrations. Saying we're doing it anyway, passing executive orders that can be overturned either under this administration or future administrations does not give us that pathway. So once again, we've had six months where the city attorneys could have gotten us actually quicker to this process. And that's been articulated. And I don't understand how in that memo there was a complete bait and switch and different tune. So I think that is why it warrants a public conversation. You've had six months to do the private and we have not even gotten any progress on that.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for the city clerk. I think that Councilmember Jenkins, Councilmember Ellison and I are all calling on our memory here, though I did go back and watch the proceedings of this. Mr. Clerk, can you tell me how many times, just in your knowledge, has the council waived privilege on a, on a letter, on, on advice from our city attorney?
Council President, to Councilmember Palmasano's inquiry, I actually was interested myself on this and I asked our assistant clerk, Jackie Hanson, who as you know, has been here 40 years. And the two of us checked our databases and going back to at least 1980, which is where we stopped with our databases, there's only been one instance where council waived privilege and it's the instance that's been cited by Councilmember Wonsley.
So it was the item in 2021 that I think I thoroughly explained to the best of my knowledge and my recollection. You know, in my recollection, this was written because it was directed to be written to the city attorney such that it get made public. Perhaps the city attorney then decided, we'll just make that one public and let's be done with this. But I firmly pointed out at committee that voting to send a memo to the mayor across the street about this consent decree is not useful for people here in Minneapolis. You all had time, in my mind, we still have time, to perhaps develop a resolution that would engage us as a body formally in that work. And that would be a resolution that would stand. It would, it would be a resolution that future councils would have to go back and change or undo if they did not want to be a part. So to me, that's a better method of working together. That's a more appropriate action of a legislative body. But I do mean that this holds great weight. If this city council, if all 13 members here choose to waive attorney-client privilege in this case, it's a slippery slope. I can already see the emails coming for every other thing to waive attorney-client privilege and the issue of transparency. And I do stand by what I said. So let's please wait until after the conversation that we could have where we receive candid feedback and advice from our city attorney and please approve Councilmember Cashman's motion to do so.
Attorney Anderson.
Council President, I do feel some compulsion to defend myself a little bit here. No other city has been in the situation that we are in. No other city. I have done my best to explore options for you all. I learn as I go. Information comes in as I go. And as any good attorney, that analysis needs to be done. I have done the best that I can in a very, very unusual situation. Even Professor Moran is quoted in Axios as saying, this is uncharted territory. And the action that the council ultimately wants to take to direct me to combine the consent decree and the settlement agreement is a quote, "long shot." So I just want to, again, defend my own professional reputation and that of my office. I am doing the best that I can in a situation that truly no one else has faced.
Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Council President Payne. I have a question for the clerk. If you can communicate with us, how many consent decrees, when it comes to the police armament, we've had in the history of Minneapolis?
Mr. President, to Councilmember Chavez, none.
Settlement agreements?
In terms of the settlement agreement of the nature that we have with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights, which I'm assuming you're referring to, none.
Thank you.
Vice President Chug Thai.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I don't read this item. And I understand that we are, we're talking about postponement of it. And, you know, I think it would be my preference to, for us to dispose of the item now because I can totally see us doing this, a really lengthy discussion again in a couple of hours when we get out of closed session. And ultimately, I don't think anyone's changing their mind really here. But, sorry, with the exception of Councilmember Cashman, maybe. But I, I just want to, I want to mention a couple of things here. I think, I think where we all have some alignment is, is we are living in pretty unprecedented times and we are navigating uncharted territory together. I, I just want to be, I want to be very clear. I have not heard the, the intent of this resolution being an attack on our city attorney's reputation or her character or her work ethic. I, I can appreciate that, that tensions are running high, but I, I like, I think everyone's doing the best they can. And I just, I appreciate that the, the attorney feels a need to defend her reputation and, and no one's attacking it, like, like literally no one's attacking it right now. So just wanted to make note of that. Secondly, I think I heard Councilmember Palmasano mention something about a slippery slope. And, and being able to see, you know, every other week or every couple of months from here until, I don't know, the end of time, that, that we are taking up consideration of waiving attorney-client privilege. And I just, like, the evidence just doesn't support that in any way. Right, the last time we waived privilege also was during incredibly unprecedented times in 2021. Here we are four years later, dealing with something that is semi-related to what you were taking up back in 2021. And, and clearly it didn't produce a slippery slope. And, and, and so I just, I just think it's a little bit, it's going a little far to say that, that this action is going to produce waiving privilege every cycle or, or anything of that nature. So just wanted to contribute that and, and thank you, Mr. President.
Councilmember Ellison.
I keep trying to figure out when I'm going to say something, but I was going to wait until after closed session if that's what we were doing. But I just wanted to say a few things. One is that with the nature of. One is that, with the nature of being in an unprecedented situation, it means you're going to kind of stumble through it a little bit. And I think that it's totally fair for us to acknowledge two things. One is that while this action in and of itself maybe isn't a slippery slope, I think we'd be kidding ourselves to say that it couldn't become one. That's a commitment that this council would then have to make after this action. And I say that as somebody who basically supports this action. I, you know, and the reason I support it is because the scope is narrow, right? We're not waiving privilege indefinitely. We're not, you know, I've read the memo. You know, I also think that there are a lot of, I've gotten questions, I feel like a lot of us maybe have gotten questions about why we can't do this or why we can't do that. And it's, and I think that it's clarifying for the, for the public to understand what's possible, viable, legally permissible. I think all of that is, is valid. But I, but I, but I do think that we've got to be very specific and careful about how we proceed. One of the things that I just want to just hold up is that City Attorney Anderson mentioned that we're, that she's been put, and the city's been put in an unprecedented situation. And I think that we would, I think that it would benefit us all to, to understand that and have a little empathy for that, which doesn't mean that we're making every right call or that City Attorney Anderson's making every right call, but that if we're going to be navigating these unprecedented times together, I think that we're better off doing it collaboratively. That goes for the mayor, that goes for the city attorney's office, that also goes for us. And so, that's, you know, I just want to put that out there, that as we all proceed in this way, that is, that feels frustrating. If we want to be transparent, we want to be, you know, within our legal bounds here, that, that drawing a lot of hard lines about who is and isn't in the fight with us is just not going to be all that productive towards getting us a resolution here. And so, I just wanted to say that, I'm, you know, I think that if genuinely, the only thing that's going to happen after closed session is that we're going to do exactly this again, then I don't want to postpone. But, but, yeah, but if, if there's, if there's real room for discussion and collaboration here, I guess it's not the worst thing. I don't mind it. So, I'm erring on the side of not supporting the postponement, because as it stands, I just sort of think we're gonna, we're all going to land right back where we are. But I think that there are genuine questions and there are genuine bridges that can be built if we're willing to have a conversation. That's not, yes, us council, yes, the city attorney, yes, the mayor's office. I think that there are genuine bridges that can be built. So, I offer that for what it's worth, maybe nothing, but, yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Ellison, it's definitely worth something. I'll just say that. I appreciate the discussion that we're having here on something that is unprecedented. And I think to underplay that, the seriousness in which this body is taking the waiving of privilege is not correct. Like, I think Councilmember Wonsley is taking it very, very seriously. And it is for an item that is of the utmost importance to our work, to the work of the settlement agreement and the DOJ consent decree, and then also just the functions of our body. And I do want to just amplify the fact that, being a council member that had an opportunity to connect with the C A O's office on the M D H R settlement agreement and the dismissal of the DOJ consent decree, there was information that came out in those conversations that was new to me and that took me aback and was a changing of the terrain in our ability of what we were able to do. And for all intensive purposes, as a council member, I was led to believe that we, as a city council, are able to make this type of request of having the DOJ consent decree folded into the settlement agreement and asset of our city attorneys, up until the point that we actually made the action and put it into the, into RCA form. And that is just me stating the fact that, like, that there was a clunkiness of process and there was a, just a contradiction of information for me in order to do this work. And I think that's something that is worth noting and needs to be resolved. Another, another contradiction that I will name is, many, many times it has been stated that this has already been made public. And this waiving of privilege would also allow for it to become public and us have this public discussion. And so, I, I, I'm not sure about how the risk itself changes when, when that's the case. But I do think, and this is just based off of what I feel in my gut, that it's important for us to have a conversation together, since we are spending so much time right now discussing it in closed session with our city attorneys. I personally do think, like, after that conversation, I, I will be supporting the waiving of privilege for the reasons that I have stated before, but I do think it warrants us having the conversation after closed session. And so I'll be supporting this motion at this time, but I don't want this body or the public to, to feel like we aren't taking this seriously and the fact that there's been an inconsistency of the information that we have received. And it's a very, very important item that we're taking on and asking questions about. And there are questions that show up here around the government structure and functions. And we have only recently changed government structure. And cities that have had changed government structure for more than a decade still are figuring out what that looks like. And so this is a part of that growing pain muddled into an issue that is unprecedented. So I just wanted to name that as well.
Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Ellison, thank you so much for your, your wise words. I don't agree with you on everything, but you, you had a very calming effect here on this discussion. Thank you for that love of maturity. So, I will be voting to get away from the TV cameras and talk amongst ourselves. And, City Attorney Anderson, I do apologize for you being attacked, because I believe that, that you were being personally called out.
That's not okay.
Councilmember Vitale.
Thank you. I won't use the word "attack" because I don't believe that it was an attack, but I do believe that her integrity was questioned by Councilmember Wonsley up here. And then Vice President Chuck Tai went on to gaslight us and make us think we didn't hear what we clearly heard up here. I don't like that. If there's a, like, I'm ready for us to vote. I don't think we need to have a closed session. Councilmember Wonsley is 100% correct. We've been talking about this for six months. People should vote however they want to and let this conversation end with that. Because if we're going to continue with acting like what we just had going on up here for 45 minutes didn't happen, I find a problem with that. This whole conversation is supposed to be about transparency and communication and being able to work together. And there definitely has been, Councilmember Wonsley certainly questioned the integrity of the city attorney's office. And it's recorded and we can all go back and listen. I don't know what the Vice President's interpretation of it was, but I know what mine was. And so I would love for us to just move forward, vote on this, and, and let whatever happens, happens afterwards.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Mr. Chair, I just found this memo, having been stated that it was obtained by the Star Tribune on June 10th. It's in an article from Andy Mannix. So it is in the public domain, just saying. I think different than waiving attorney-client privilege in 2021, when we asked, does the council have authority to write an ordinance about use of force and less lethal force? And that was a question. This is a bit different. This opens us up to a different kind of liability here as a body in making, in talking about these decisions that are about legal court cases. And I, I do hope that we all up here have the ability to change our mind when additional information is presented. I do hope that we can stead, hold steadfastly to our principles up here, but we can also see new information and, and look to change our mind. My own, I'll just speak for myself, my own mind was changed when, you know, DOJ wanted to cancel the consent decree. And I probably started talking about it like, well, we're going to get the strongest pieces of all these pieces, all these things together and put it into one. Now, after lots of conversations and with attorney advice from a real attorney, from our attorney that we've selected to be our city attorney's office leader, I understand that the best way to move forward is a little different. And so I changed my mind. So, if you see a little more conversation as an opportunity to change your mind, then please vote for this postponement until after that conversation today. Thank you.
Seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on the postponement of item 2.1 until after closed session.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
No.
Councilmember Vitale.
No.
Councilmember Ellison.
No.
Councilmember Wonsley.
No.
Vice President Chuck Tai.
No.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are seven ayes and five nays.
That carries, and we will take that item up at the end of our agenda. Next, we will take up item 2.2. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Can you come back to me? I'm trying to understand what item number 2.2 is.
Councilmember Palmasano.
No.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
No.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
No.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chuck Tai.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Nay.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are eight ayes and four nays.
That carries, and that item is adopted. We will return item 2.1 once we finish our closed session. So we will finish with our standing committees and have the Public Health and Safety Committee, which will be presented by that committee's chair, Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, President Payne. The Public Health and Safety Committee will be bringing forward four items. Item number one is an honorary resolution for victims of police brutality. Item number two is accepting and authorizing a grant for the Minnesota Auto Theft Prevention from Minnesota Department of Public Safety. Item number three is considering a joint powers agreement with state for law enforcement support services. This item was forwarded without recommendation. And lastly, item number four is approving 21 appointments for the Safe and Thriving Communities Work Group. With that, I will approve all items and have a separate discussion and vote for item number three.
Councilmember Chavez has moved the committee's report. We will take up items one, two, and four, and a separate vote and discussion on three. Is there any discussion on the remainder of those items? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chuck Tai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
Those items carry. Next, we will take up item number three, and we'll recognize Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, President Payne. I just wanted to separate out this vote, because I'll be voting against this item, which is a joint powers agreement with the state of Minnesota on behalf of the Minnesota State Patrol that is meant to assist law enforcement services, including patrols that may include specialty assignments such as demonstration response and/or large event security. My concern with this J P A is that it will not require the Minnesota State Patrol officers to follow the city separation ordinance, nor, which is really important to our immigrant community, nor the provisions of the M D H R settlement agreement. And I just want to express my opinion on this item. And if someone would like to make a motion, they can.
Councilmember Chavez, here, I'll get in queue. I think the last time the joint powers agreement came through, this was during the Biden administration. I don't think we were paying as close attention to the importance of the separation ordinance. My focus was really around our settlement agreement and ensuring that any law enforcement that is operating within city limits is at least abiding by some of the main tenants of the settlement agreement. We know that we wouldn't be able to put the full provisions of the settlement agreement on another agency. But we had worked really closely with the city attorney's office to draft up a joint statement of principles to include in the joint powers agreement. And I never saw that joint powers agreement come back forward. And I asked a question in committee about whether, what was the history of that? And I don't know if we ever got a response, but I do see a representative from M P D, would you want to come up and speak to the state patrol? Oh, and a motion. So, this isn't, doesn't have, there's not been a motion to approve this?
So moved.
What? Are you making a motion to approve it?
Yes.
Okay. There's been a motion and it's to approve and it's been seconded. Thank you.
Council President, council members, Deputy Chief John Kingsbury with patrol. I think the important part to know about this particular agreement is the fact that we need to continue that coordination with our law enforcement partners, not only in times of planned events, but spontaneous and emergency events. And this is one way to do it. Keeping that, those connections and our relationships with them is very important to responding to incidents, as well as having avenues or ways to draw on their resources that we may not have. And this is an important way to do that. It will be set in place. We can use it at a moment's notice if it's approved.
And is there a way to, to limit the detail that they have to put provisions on whether or not they're going to enforce immigration or limits according to some of our settlement agreement provisions?
Council President, yes. With this agreement, they will work at our direction. However, they are still responsible to follow their own policies, state policies, and specifically the state patrol statute that gives them the authority to operate. And none of that allows for them to work in an immigration capacity.
Our state patrol has limitations and similar to the separation ordinance?
Not to my knowledge, Council President.
Okay.
May I add, sir? They do, with their Chapter 299 powers that the, that the state gives them, that is not one of the listed powers. So it's, their law enforcement powers are strictly related to working security at the Capitol, working trunk highways, working as peace officers in local jurisdictions when they're needed.
I'm still confused. Are they able to support immigration enforcement? I was like, I can't tell based on that answer.
Council President, not by their statute and not by their direction, from what I've been told from their, their lieutenant colonel.
Okay. Councilmember Osman.
I think you just answered the question I had. I think it's, it's important that we keep that relationship with, with the state agency and law enforcement. We need all the help we can get, but at the same time, we also want to make sure that we, when they are operating and doing, helping us do the work, and they are in our streets, you know, community feels safe. And definitely, the enforcement of assisting ICE, it's a huge problem to our community. And based on the answers I'm hearing is that if we approve this agreement or accept this agreement, they will not assist federal agencies enforcing ICE. Am I correct?
Council President, council member, this joint powers agreement allows them to work at our direction. We are not allowed to assist in immigration enforcement. What they do outside of this agreement, M P D or the city has no, no say in.
And their side of what they do, you were told that it's against their policy to assist federal agencies.
Council President, council member, yes.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, President Payne. I did want to make sure I'm also reading the RCA correctly. So they, the state patrol could, because you mentioned this is used at the discretion of M P D. of MPD, it's noted on the RCA that they could, will support with specialty assignments such as demonstration response. Can you clarify, is demonstration response the same as crowd control?
Council President, Council Member, it could be. Demonstration response could be everything from something that we saw on Saturday with the No Kings protests to something like what we anticipate with the July 4th fireworks, where we have large crowds. So think of it more as large crowd management situations.
How is that different from crowd control?
Council President, Council Member, it depends on the actions of the crowd. So it can be delineated by the actions of the crowd and what is occurring.
Okay. I think we had a conversation in this, in the Public Health and Safety Committee, in terms of some of the concerns around this element, just based off of what happened on June 3rd. While there's still this premise around there was a federal-led operation where ICE was also part of that operation, they were there on site, MPD assisted with crowd control and not, and it sounds like it could fluctuate of like the response of the crowd, that factor under crowd control there. And that, in my opinion, means that this could be used or activated in those circumstances if there was another federal operation where it was determined you need either demonstration response or crowd control. I think that's the piece that's concerning, and this was again flagged in committee for me. I think also as we're continuing to have conversations around the separation ordinance and how MPD's compliance factors into that, makes me a little weary of supporting measures like this. But I did want to name this on the basis of explicitly naming like demonstration response and crowd control factors into that. And I know that was a traumatic piece and something that, quote unquote, contributed to like feelings of escalation in those operations. So just being cognizant of that. And if there was a more limited scope in this RCA around how this could be activated, I think I could get on board. But I will name those are my concerns, just with what has happened in the past week and why I don't feel comfortable supporting this item as of now.
Council President, Council Member, if I may respond, I would just like to emphasize and point out that this is a mutual agreement, meaning that both sides, we would need to request it, and they would need to agree to come and help.
In that case, do you have any information of like the successful or rates of approval between the mutual aid agreements, like year-to-date, where there's been a denial of that mutual aid request of support?
Council President, Council Member, I'm not quite following the question.
So you mentioned that the party, so the State Patrol, will have to approve MPD's requests to support them under the basis of this contract, the terms here. I'm saying, has there been a situation where they have, or how often have they denied those requests from MPD?
Council President, Council Member, this is a new agreement, so I don't have anything to show that.
We've been, I feel like this contract has been approved before. Have we not had a mutual aid agreement with the State Patrol prior to this contract?
Council President, Council Member, we have, but it was specific to high-visibility patrol in two areas of the city, along Lake Street and then along Broadway.
Okay. So the new components to this contract, which provision, because is it, is it both the large security and the demonstration response? Are those now just the two pieces, two new pieces?
Council President, Council Member, this is a much wider agreement in what services are being asked for. So to your point, those are components of a larger agreement. In addition, the specific high-visibility patrols in those specific areas of North Minneapolis and then along Lake Street and South Minneapolis have been removed.
Can you share, is it around safety, rates have indicated something different in terms of less visibility needed in those areas? I'm interested in what shifted to now. Again, you're saying there's an expanded scope in the RCA. It just mentions large-scale events. I don't even know what that even qualifies as, why that's not something that, it sounds like maybe you mentioned the No Kings protest, or even is buybacks usually, in my mind, are something that goes to support our large-scale events? And then now the demonstration response. What led to the decision to move to those two particular things as opposed to increased visibility? Because I know you all talk about like staffing challenges and the need to keep certain areas that are experiencing increased violence safe, and the struggle with that, with, you know, the lack of staffing among MPD's ranks.
Council President, Council Member, this was a mutual discussion between us, and those items were removed because they were also having an inability to staff those. And as our staffing has slightly improved, we are able to take some of those jobs on, like the directed patrol, on our own.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Colleagues, a reminder that this is routine, and this is not as complicated as we're making it sound. Deputy Chief Kingsbury could certainly explain patrol complexity to us, but that's not what is in front of us here. We have a separation ordinance. Even if the State Patrol does not, we would not partner with them on any immigration enforcement initiative. And when it's aid like this, we cannot force any jurisdiction to do anything, but they only come and help us in ways we ask them to. So we, the city of Minneapolis, we do get to limit our own scope of work in any partnership like this. And in this city right now, with the size of our current force, I think we need partnerships. So let's move forward with this.
Councilmember Ellison.
Yeah, I just was going to hop in queue to basically agree with Councilmember Palmasano. You know, it's no surprise to folks that I, you know, I don't love just, at a philosophical level, the way that cities do public safety. I think that we could really expand them and get creative. But to the extent that we do it this way, this is one of our tools. And unless we've got something to replace this tool, I don't see how we remove this tool. And so that's kind of my logic. I'd be open to sort of a solution for how we improve this, but I probably wouldn't support just voting it down. So that's, you know, I guess I just wanted to offer that. But I think all the questions are valid, and I think that we, and I do think that we would be all pretty mortified if we entered in this agreement and then saw that money that we put towards mutual aid agreements was going towards things that we didn't want to see. So I think, you know, I hope you can kind of respect that that's the level of anxiety that you're getting from the dais and understand that. If there's ways to reassure that, that that doesn't happen, I'm all ears on that and would support that. Otherwise, you know, I don't see an option for us to just not, like, you know, flatly deny this tool.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, President Payne. Actually, in light of what Councilmember Ellison just suggested, I know we've had the ability with time, and I think Council President Payne, you've done this a couple of times yourself and working with staff, to see if there's a way to reach kind of that happy medium. I will name, of course, like, if there's a pathway to put even more of a limited scope on the crowd control or demonstration response, I think that is the hidden piece of just concern too. But I don't know if that's something in which we can hold over another cycle to give space to talk or connect with leadership around that, to kind of get at what you're naming to, Councilmember Ellison.
Are you making a motion to hold this for a cycle? Is there a second?
Yeah, yeah. Not seeing any support for that, so, no.
Looks like we're just going to take this one up. Seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
No.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
No.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
No.
Vice President Shugtai.
No.
President Payne.
Nay.
There are seven ayes and five nays.
That carries, and that is adopted, and that completes the Public Health and Safety Committee. The next order of business is notice of ordinance introductions. We have three notices today. First, Councilmember Palmasano gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance amending the administration code to align city and state law in regard to sick and safe time and updating its enforcement provision. The second and third notices are from Councilmembers Chavez, Shugtai, and Chowdhury, who give notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of two ordinances, amending the administration and civil rights codes, adding reporting requirements and protections for discrimination based on perceived citizenship or immigration status. Are there any questions on these notices? Councilmember Palmasano.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to share a couple words on the sick and safe time ordinance and sort of how this has developed and where it's going. Colleagues, this amendment is simply about aligning our sick and safe time ordinance with state law. Now that it has passed in the state, we were the first to do it, and now it is state law. Our ordinance was first enacted in early 2017, and so I am one of the last authors standing. Our ordinance predates state law. They copied and pasted large sections of our ordinance, but they've made some modifications over the years where we have not. This amendment really intends to simplify and unify our ordinance with state law, so it's easier for employers and employees to understand and not have to follow two separate sets of regulations and filter them together. The state law is broader than our ordinance, and it very slightly favors the employee in things like the definition of a family member, for example. And I look forward to making these kinds of changes in Minneapolis. So any changes do not impact our ability to enforce these regulations, and I'm open to having more conversation with you about this as it moves forward. Thank you.
Seeing no one else in queue, those notices are hereby given, and no further action is required at this time. The next order of business is the introduction and referral calendar. We have two items today. First, pursuant to notice, Councilmember Cashman moves to introduce an ordinance amending the Streets and Sidewalks Code for first reading and referral to the Climate and Infrastructure Committee, amending advisory board compositions in certain districts. Second, pursuant to notice, Councilmember Ellison and Vitak move to introduce an ordinance amending the Streets and Sidewalks Code for first reading and referral to the Climate and Infrastructure Committee, eliminating the sunset provision for the West Broadway Improvement Special Service District. May have a motion to approve those introductions.
So moved.
Second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and these matters are referred to the appropriate committees. The next order of business is resolutions. We have three honorary resolutions on our agenda today, including the late addition of Djibouti Independence Day, all of which received presentations prior to today's meeting. Are there any questions or comments from council members? May have a motion to adopt the resolutions.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and those resolutions are adopted. The next order of business is unfinished business. At the beginning of the meeting, we added this item, which is consideration of an amendment to Council Action 2024-A-0845, a staff direction adopted by the City Council last November related to municipal revenue. I will move approval of this amendment. Can I get a second?
Second.
I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and is adopted. Our next order of business is a request for closed session. Before I recognize the city attorney and we recess for closed session, I'll ask if there's any announcements from council members. Councilmember Ellison.
Just sorry, was not getting myself in queue fast enough. Just wanted to thank you for mentioning Mark and Melissa Hortman at the top of the meeting. And I know that there's going to be a vigil tonight at the Capitol steps from 8:00 to 9:30. And so I'll be going. I'm sure a lot of us are planning on going, but just thought it would be the public's interest to know that people are going to be honoring their lives and their service. And so, yeah, so I just wanted to make that announcement, and I hope folks turn out. And even if they don't, I know that a lot of people have a lot of love for Mark and Melissa all across the state, so that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you. I wanted to thank my colleagues for that last vote about the joint powers agreement. You know, for years after the Fourth of July, council members decry us being underprepared for the Fourth of July, and this will really help that. I'm afraid that a delay would have, well, it wouldn't have been put in place then, by then. So this is a little bit of extra support for our coming-up Fourth of July plans to keep everybody safe. Thank you.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just a couple of announcements. As we know, tomorrow is Juneteenth, and so there are a number of events going on throughout the city. One specific event is happening at Mini Haha and Lake Street, which is a large-scale event, I believe hosted by the Coliseum Building and other businesses in the area. And also, you know, wanted to note that next weekend is the Pride Celebration at Loring Park. I believe the City Council will have a contingency marching in that parade, and just hope that the community comes out and supports this event and remains safe and have a great time celebrating Pride. There was a really troubling Supreme Court decision today that upheld the Tennessee law to withhold health care for trans and gender nonconforming people. It's very devastating to this community, to my community, and I hope folks can show up and show support next weekend. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. I know that the improvements to Nicollet Mall at the center of our city are of interest to a lot of community members and council members. So I wanted to invite folks to the opening of the We Are Water exhibit at 8th and Nicollet this Friday at 3:00 PM, which is going to be a really great exhibit running in what used to be a vacant storefront, the Panera Bread at 8th and Nicollet. It'll be running all summer, and that's really, you know, good reason to visit Nicollet Mall, as well as the Noons on Nicollet, which starts today, which will be running three times this summer, from 11:30 to 1:30, in between 7th and 8th on Nicollet.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Councilmember Payne, this might be a little bit out of order, so I just apologize. I wanted to see if it would be possible for me to change my vote on the joint powers agreement. I didn't realize that that was for support for the Fourth of July, and I know that it wouldn't change the outcome of the vote. I do have concerns about our city's current separation ordinance, but I think that's something that we will be exploring and taking up. But I know it's out of order, but I thought I would ask now rather than way after the closed session.
So rather than making a motion to reconsider, without objection, would the clerk be able to record that? Is that...[1768.26]
Mr. President, if there is no objection, then we can change councilmember Chowdhury's vote, which was a nay to a yea. That makes the outcome eight to four.
All right. No objections? Not seeing any? Got that documented. Thank you. Councilmember Osmond.
Thank you. I have an announcement. Usually, the Somali week is happening on June 28th on Lake Street, the largest Somali event in the world, I believe. People come from all over the world, Australia, Europe, Africa, and they just really have a great time. It's not just the gathering on Lake Street, but there's also sports tournaments that's happening, basketball, soccer. There's also theater, culture, so check it out, and it's a great event. The city of Minneapolis, you know, is honored to have this event on Lake Street. Thank you.
Seeing no one else in queue, with that, we've completed all items on our agenda except item number 2.1 on the committee of a whole agenda, which is related to our closed session. So we will now consider the request for a closed session, which is to receive a briefing on the litigation matter listed on the agenda. Before I move to close the meeting, I'll recognize the city attorney to provide the legal basis for the requested closed session.
Thank you, Council President. The next item on the agenda is the case of State of Minnesota by Rebecca Lucero, Commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Human Rights, MDHR, versus the City of Minneapolis. Your lawyers wish to provide a briefing to the council on this litigation matter. Accordingly, under Minnesota Open Meeting Law, Minnesota Statute Section 13D.05, subdivision 3B, the council may upon a proper motion close the meeting for the purposes of attorney-client communication as permitted by the attorney-client privilege. In considering the motion, the council should weigh the right of the public to know what its government is doing against the need of the city to preserve the confidentiality of its discussions with its attorneys.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. I move to close our public meeting as authorized under the Open Meeting Law, specifically Minnesota Statute Section 13D dot 05, for the purpose of receiving a briefing on the litigation matter of State of Minnesota by Rebecca Lucero, Commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Human Rights, versus City of Minneapolis. May I have a second to that motion? The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chagthai.
His absent.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries. For the viewing public, I will note that the broadcast of this meeting will continue, and council will reconvene in public after we've concluded the closed session. Let's meet in the room at 12:10 to give people a short break, but let's try to power through.
Tech team, we're ready.
The time is now 1:59 and the City Council has reconvened an open session following our closed session. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to prove the presence of a quorum.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Present.
Councilmember Pomassano.
Present.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Present.
Councilmember Cashman.
Present.
Councilmember Osman.
Present.
Councilmember Rainville.
Present.
Councilmember Chavez.
Present.
Councilmember Vitale.
Present.
Councilmember Ellison.
Here.
Councilmember Kosky is absent. Councilmember Wonsley.
Present.
Vice President Shugtai.
Present.
President Payne.
Present.
There are 12 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. We, colleagues, we have item 2.1 from our committee of the whole agenda. Does that need to be motioned once again? Is there a motion to approve item 2.1?
Hi. I would like to motion for approval and ask for a second.
Second.
Item 2.1 from the current agenda has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Nay.
Councilmember Pomassano.
No.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Nay.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
No.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are eight ayes and four nays.
That item carries and I will recognize Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, President Payne. Ashley, also, and Clerk Carl, please help me with this, but in conversation, I know you're supporting this as author of the unfinished business item number one. I would like to reconsider this item, to postpone for one cycle so that we can reconcile some changes made by Andrew Cent over at 9:30 last night and also the changes that Council President Payne has brought forward today.
I'll second that.
So the motion is to reconsider the vote on unfinished business, item number one, which is the staff direction.
Correct. This is a staff direction. An apologies, colleagues, this was moving pretty quickly last night to expand the scope of a previous staff direction around exploring municipal revenue sources. This came up during our discussion in the Board of Estiment and Taxation. We have a new full-time staffer who would like to work alongside our policy and research group to help expand the scope of this. And we were revising this to accommodate that, but I didn't get a chance to more fully connect with the original author of the staff direction and I'd absolutely want to honor her intentions on that original staff direction as we open up the scope of this. So she would like a little bit of time just to reconcile the differences between what was presented today and where she would like to see that. Is there any discussion on the motion to reconsider? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins. Councilmember Pomassano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and now I will entertain a motion, Councilmember Wonsley.
Motion to continue for one cycle.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it and that completes all business for today and with nothing further to come before the council without objection, this meeting is adjourned.